We need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, no old business, uh, new business? Oh, yeah.
I got everything in order.
Oh, PTO.
How much is that?
Oh, everything's in order, okay. While we're signing this, I have a little old business we could just approve. We had a meeting with Washington for Safe Harbor. The environmental specialists from Washington DC came yesterday, and the Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Ports from the DOT in Maine. she thinks that we're two to four weeks away from getting a leave of permanent approval, which means we're going to go to grant, the grant agreement phase, which means it's a very good, it's a very good sign. It means we're, we may be getting it, we may.
Marvelous.
I can't do.
I know.
You're gonna have to get up and take a closer look. So that was very successful. I don't know, I'll just sign while.
Can't sanitize.
No, black.
Okay, so now we're going to the liquor license. I see Glenn's here, so nothing's changed with the, it's just a renewal?
Yes.
Everything's changed, actually, now you're using some people, right?
That was gonna be my question to the town, yes. No, nothing has, nothing has changed on the board.
Okay, nothing and everything.
Nothing and everything.
So we don't have any objections to continuing Kohl's? Class one, two, three, four restaurants?
Sign in blue, blue.
No blue for me, I don't have any.
I don't have a plan.
Here, Dan has it.
Dan has the blue?
I know, I don't use blue pens.
I usually use black.
Okay, so we, I'll give this to you, Dan. Then you can pass the pen down, you pass this guy, he'll help you get another pen.
Do some hand sanitizer on there.
Uh, we're done here.
Oh, fuck! Tell me. Over here. Uh, yes. So I, I'll be ready in the morning, I guess. You, you get it tomorrow?
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
We're all good?
We're all good.
Yeah?
All right, thank you.
I heard your takeout window's doing well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know.
Well, here's what it is.
This is, you know, clearly an devastating summer.
You look very good on Facebook with the new drink.
Trying, get a fresh one tonight, but, you know.
Ask Carol about her rhubarb and strawberry simple syrup.
Carol, you can tell me some kind of, I do.
I will be bringing you, I will be bringing you a jar.
Simple syrup that we can make with.
I think you should, you should make a new drink every other Wednesday that needs to be previewed here.
That's gonna bring everyone, that's curious.
So every Wednesday.
It needs to be approved every other Wednesday.
We're going live Wednesday night, we're telling them, so.
Maybe do the taste test.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn, for coming in. Now, Angel, you're here. Nothing's changed. Okay, so we need, we have second liquor license for sure thing. It's just beer and wine, right? Okay, do we have a motion? I don't know.
So moved.
The sign, Glenn, you did?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna do that with a motion to, motion to sign Kohl's. Rachel said, did you? And Dan?
She seconded.
All in favor? Okay, so for this one, we'll do another motion. Bonnie, you made a motion to do sure thing?
Yeah.
Who wants a second?
Second.
And Dan seconded, okay. All in favor?
Do we need to do the blue pen thing again, but come back?
I think we do. Where's the green? We need to sanitize this.
How are you gonna do it?
Okay.
Grass is coming back.
All right. Well, after we get that signed, we have a salt bid.
This is to join the county. We collaborate with Washington County, and they get us a cheap salt bid. We do this every year.
So anything we need to know, we just need to, oh, oh, so we haven't got the bid yet? This is an agreement to join? Oh, okay. So we, I make a motion that we sign the bulk purchasing highway salt agreement?
I second.
All in favor? Okay, let's send it down this way. Only needs to do signature, so if you sign it and Dan signs it, that's fine. Water Street closure for business use. All right, so, um, I spoke to Glenn and I spoke to Jim. Neither one of them have filled out the forms. Glenn is overwhelmed with what he's doing right now and isn't interested. Jim thinks that he already has outside seating, seating, and he doesn't want to do it, and, I haven't talked to Gail, but they have outside seating. And Hadley closes it too, when she is open.
She's not even open this summer.
So it's, I, I just wanted to talk to them personally because I don't want to close the street and then not everybody.
Not everybody there, yeah. Well, and I had left it up to the restaurants to carry the ball and let me know what I needed to do.
Okay, so they're not.
I have not heard from them. My thought was that it was kind of a lukewarm response. It sounded okay when they started, it was all fun, but I think in reality, they may not be making money for that or whatever. So they're better off doing takeout.
So we could just table this for now.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we table the closure of Water Street. Mm-hmm. Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, now to the big event of the evening is to make sure that you hopefully have all looked at the annual town warrant. I've been doing it with Renee for a few weeks, and with Suzette, and with Budget Committee and all.
Is their motion allowed out?
I made a motion that we, that we table the closure of Water Street, and if somebody seconded, I don't know who did.
Ed did.
Dan did. So now, do you have, oh, I've got the official election. So are there two things we have to sign here?
One is for the election of officials, and one is the warrant.
Okay, so I make a motion that we sign the town annual officials election for August 11th. I second. All in favor?
Here's another fun, fun-filled, uh,
Evening.
bunch of sessions.
Thank you for all your work and the Budget Committee's work. I think we worked very well together.
Absolutely, yeah. Considering the Zoom, uh, yeah. It was very well done. The Adult Ed contract is that.
We're not there yet. We're not at that.
We're just almost there.
We're still signing the election warrant.
Yeah.
Can you get that to Rachel for me?
Yes, I can. Is that what you would like me to do?
Yes.
In fact, I'm gonna send it.
Air mail. Thank you, dear.
All right, and I'll make a motion that we sign the articles, the warrant articles for the annual town business meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Just a note of sadness for Lee Jason. Nations is not here this evening because his father passed away this morning. So we extend our deepest condolences to him. And I know it must be really hard. Thanks to you, Rachel. Do you, um, can I have that?
No.
Okay. Good quick slip. We did it. So we've got the new agreement for the Axiom Adult Ed, and did you want to say what they reported to you?
Yes, they, they have, even through the COVID, they've been educating online. So they've been continually offering that sequel. In the current year, the last year that we've been with Axiom, they've had 14 Lubeck students go to the program in some way or another. Wonderful, I thought that was.
Yeah, having them online may be good for that.
Yep.
So, um, nothing has changed with the agreement? It's just a rollover from the year before, no, no funds or different prices?
Seventeen thousand nine hundred, and that comes out of the CD that we have set up for.
So it's no taxes raised. So I would make a motion that we allow our town administrator Renee Gray to sign this contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, it's all yours, Renee. Now I have here going to be a message from the Select Board. I will read it. It has been both an exciting and a challenging year. We found that with perseverance and help from all the hardworking fishermen and the dedication of the Safe Harbor Committee, that even the small easternmost town in the continental United States can become the recipient of a federal grant to build a breakwater well-deserved protected harbor. With the great tides and horrific weather our fishermen have endured, we hope to finally improve the conditions to get to and from their boats and their product to market. Our community has rose to the demands of the COVID-19 pandemic with great ferocity, homeschooling their children while some losing their jobs. We have come together helping neighbor and changing our everyday lives to make Lubeck a safe community. We would like to thank Renee Gray, who stood up to this pandemic as our town administrator and going further by becoming our Emergency Management Director during this trying time. She and all the town employees kept this town going, whatever it took, be it the drive-up window, staggering public work shifts, or helping out wherever it was needed to get the job done. Thank you all for your cooperation this year, and let's hope that a cure is soon to come and we can once again have peace of mind to safely interact with each other in our daily lives. That was the best I could do.
That was very good, very good.
I think there's "safe" twice in one paragraph. I think we can just, we can just white it out. And we'll sign this one.
The recycle report sounds very much the same. You have to be upbeat and forward-thinking, but.
So do I have a motion that we can sign this?
So moved.
All in favor? All right. We'll try to get Jason on this. When is this going to print?
Oh, not till a couple weeks.
Oh, okay.
All your time in that, I just had a couple things to update you with. The Flatiron Corner sign that we've had over the years, many complaints about it obstructing the view when you're coming out of that street. So while we're working down in that area, we've asked if handsome construction might be able to help us plunk it up out of there and plunk it back a little bit further.
Behind the planters.
Behind the event.
It's gonna be behind the bench.
Yeah.
If you pull up and you look, you'll need to have that extra visual.
We've had it dig safe, they're doing that right now, and.
And we're not gonna have no electric, right? We don't need the power.
The electric's been disconnected, so it's very, it's a Friday. Hopefully, we'll see some action down there and get that moved back.
And the sidewalk is coming along so nicely, don't you think? And thank you for overseeing that, Renee.
Yep.
Was one.
There's one little area that the water company has to move some shut-off, so it's gonna take like three weeks to do it. So they've left a little area that's down by Townsend Lane that's not paved, but they'll be coming back once the water company gets that moved out. So just another quick announcement, reminder, the primary and referendum election is July 14th. It's all day here, eight to eight. So halls are open eight to eight. I still encourage absentee ballots. We've had a slug of them, we're happy for that. But we will be set up to do it per COVID guidelines, CDC guidelines, so. That's all I have.
Public comment? Are you wanting to be on this?
Yeah, I just have a quick, by far the first month now into Renee.
Wanda, can I interrupt you? I want to thank you for spearheading that wonderful, wonderful Fourth of July. You are to be commended. I know a lot of people were, you know, less than enthusiastic about it, but you took the helm and you did a great job.
Thank you. That was, that was something that many of us felt good in. I mean, Danny and I, you know, worked together with the, we have so many, and I appreciate that. We had a great day, I think.
Yeah, you did.
And we did every single guideline.
Some people said it was the best they've been to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just had a question for Renee or Carol. Today, I got a comment, I notified the superintendent's office that our school was closed. And I'm wondering, in these situations right now, who has a right to close our school? Does the AOS, does the Department of Education, because of this COVID?
Is that Michael Beckton?
Yeah.
Maybe he could answer that.
No, and I said today, now, like, when you close this office down up here, who closes it? Renee by herself?
No, we had a team. We had, we had. Simon, Bobby, the fire, the fire, there was an emergency management team that got together and got voted.
Okay.
Um, it's a sticky ricket, you know? Because we are in the age of the coronavirus. We also have a Department of Ed at the federal level that tends to be in conflict with many others, particularly public schools. But we do have a, an ed department person at the state level, and she happens to be the daughter of Barbara Fraser. So you, I could, I could talk to her.
I appreciate that. You know what, I mean, what I say, Rachel, is I maintain this. This building is a, you know, it's a school, a public school. The town of Lubeck pays for this public school, our citizens do. And it's like the worst, we couldn't do anything down there. And I feel the town, or even the board, should have a say in what we're doing in that school building. And so I wonder if you guys, but I love.
Who made the decision that school, did it come down from the state or was it local?
It was from the office. It was from the office.
Do you know where it came from, Mike?
The office.
Yeah.
The office, meaning the what? The AOS?
The AOS.
Well, does anybody know?
Contact error.
That's when it started, it started from then. They made the decision on all of the schools that they oversee, they shut them all?
I don't know if they shut them all, but they, you know, I, I understand, we all get it about COVID. But I think we're all being responsible, we, you know, follow your guidelines. That's what they're saying. And we're all responsible enough to do that. We have to use that school to have, try to pursue the summer program for kids in Luntz. And today, I was very upset by the response I got. Because we're doing this for kids.
One of the things I would suggest, if you have a groundswell of people who want to start up school, I would say you have to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
You have to come up with a plan as to how you can do it. And you may need to type it up, put some graphics in there, schedule, whatever. Make it foolproof, so that you can convince the public of what's gonna happen.
Apparently, the public didn't decide. So I guess nobody knows who decides.
That's something the board would like for me to ask MNA, Riesel, if, you know, it is a town. You're asking the town, does the town have the right to vote or?
Who's in charge?
Yeah, yeah. A part of mine who's in charge of our school building.
Of the property.
So how was this news delivered to you? I mean, they didn't say, the AOS has made a determination because of this, this, and this, and they're just closing all their schools that are overseeing? I mean, is there an official letter?
I just asked the vote in back, and I've been asking for about two months about this long COVID. And, I mean, we just did it. I, we can be responsible, but anyway, if you guys can do that, I appreciate it.
So would the threat be, can I just ask one other question? Would the threat be that the state pulls custody when you're funding?
Oh, no, I don't think they do that. We don't even know where we're at with all of it, Renee.
What they did was they delivered food. The bus drivers delivered food, so I don't think they were taking.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's opening in the fall.
Well, I think we'll probably continue. I'd love to hear from Mike. I mean, you're still on the school board, right?
Yeah.
So do you have anything to add to?
As far as opening right now? It's all kinds of things, you know, talk of, you know, bonus schools, talking about the hybrid system, a lot of those stuff. Do we have any direction really?
There was a survey that went out to the parents. Do you know the results of that?
I put that on, 'cause I care, I put that on Facebook, hoping that seniors will respond to it because it had some great questions, not just about academics, but about, you know, our emotional health of our students, their physical health. And I hope parents will, you know, fill that out. Because that's, you know, we need input. You know, they need input from parents, from community members. And they're saying, the American Academy of Pediatrics, they know our kids need to get back to school.
I, I agree. I, I've been watching, I watch hours of federal, state, and local news and read, and the federal government wants the kids to go back to school, that much I know.
Yeah.
I know that it depends on the locality where you are. I don't believe that we have, we have what now, five?
Five.
Five, do you remember?
Five today, as of, since March. Children aren't supposed to be as vulnerable, but I certainly wouldn't be able to make any kind of decision. I just think that if a decision like that is made, the citizens of the town of Lubeck need to know why, who, and how they made that decision.
See, we have faith in our.
What scientific person that they listen to, the CDC or whomever, that drew the conclusion that they should close the school? Because I think the mental, the mental strain on not only the parents, but the children themselves to not be socializing in an elementary school setting can really be, have a negative effect.
Yeah.
And hopefully, the decision was made, obviously, I just, it would be nice to know how they arrived at the decision, that's all. So that's something I'd like to know.
Give them a choice. You know, there might be parents that don't want their kids to go. Keep them home and let them do the classroom from home. But there are certainly kids that hang out together, all come along. They're not socially distancing, they're, they're forgetting the famine. Little families might choose to go to school. So maybe it's not a this and that, it's we both.
Not only that, I mean, we have the space in our school to allow our children, you know, to be back in our.
To isolate, yeah, to socially distance.
We have the capability of that.
That's why I'm suggesting the plan.
Yeah.
To prove that you can do that.
Yeah. Instead of though, like, right now, the federal or whoever, instead of saying, you know, well, we're still waiting for, start preparing your buildings and getting.
That's right, that's right.
Get ready, start getting ready for that.
I mean, I think some schools that are more condensed than Lubeck are looking at staggering, you know, the kids who're doing half-day. But, but Lubeck, it doesn't seem to be an issue. It's, you could easily do it, as long as you've got that in black and white, you can prove to whomever that this can work, yeah.
And we don't know yet.
Mike, did the school board have any decision in this opening, closing of the school?
No, we've, we've had discussions from the superintendent beginning, what types of things are being done right now as far as planning? There has been some planning going on down there right now. So we're not sure whether we're looking at going back with a hybrid system. I mean, you know, students will go back staggered days. Certain students will go, you know, two days a week or three days a week. And we're not sure exactly what's gonna happen with that. But we really haven't heard any, let's say, not directly from the Department of Education, but no decision has really been done yet. And it's gonna be based on, you know, where you are, what county, what state.
So where was the information that Wanda just came? Didn't you just come and say that they decided the school was closed?
Yeah, that was pretty personal, from calling over there today and, or just getting information about it. We tried to get information, Carol.
So it, so you're not, so just be clear to the media and all. AOS told you the school will be closed?
They did tell me.
Meaning the building itself is closed.
Yeah.
So, well, in other words, physical, the physical building is closed, doesn't mean the school is closed. It means there will be an alternate way of learning.
I noticed that Bill Ashby put on the Facebook or somewhere today that he is already creatively thinking about PE, and he was going to teach fly fishing. And he's looking for fishing rods, which I thought was a brilliant idea, brilliant.
A whole bunch of things to say.
Yeah.
Let me say this correctly, Carol. It wasn't direct, directly at me, as far as we cannot open that building. We had to make the call, we had, we called Friday, this person wasn't in. So we called today, not me, but somebody else, and they said that the building is closed.
All right, but that doesn't mean necessarily September, or maybe I misunderstood you.
No, I mean, for this summer, we want to use it this summer.
Okay, so it's not the school's closed coming for the school year yet.
But I'm wondering who has the right to say that?
As well?
You want?
Well, I, I.
I know down in Southern Maine, Wanda. I was talking to my daughter-in-law the other night, and she teaches down in Southern Maine. She said that the schools are planning how they would, like, how many kids they can put on the bus and do the social distancing and rearranging the rooms. They're doing all kinds of things, because they don't want more kids than we do. So she says they're already planning and figuring out how they're gonna do it and spacing the children. And she was telling me that even the school buses, which would usually hold sixty, you know, and hold twenty-seven or something, because, you know, they're gonna have to make more trips, they're gonna have to get new buses, so that, you know, there's a lot to it.
There, I mean, we're so, but I do apologize because I'm talking about summertime.
Okay, no, that's my fault, I'm bothering that word there. Is it normally open in the summer?
Well, I mean, it would have been, you know, it, it could have been. But it all pertains to the summer, you know, program for the kids, for a summer food program. Like they did this spring, all of that worked so well. And, you know, it was really impressive how they, they all organized and did that. And some people wanted to continue with it. But we can't use the school, that's my, was my bottom, bottom line, that we couldn't use our school for it. But, I mean, we can find other options, I'm sure.
Some are, I mean.
Well, see, they're, they're under, you know, they're under, yeah, the guideline, the guideline. But thank you.
Thank you, Wanda. Thank you for all you've done.
I'll, I'll try to find out as much as I can. Yeah, I, yeah. Sticky ricket. It's a mess.
Oh, public comment?
Can I bring up, I would like to encourage, Carol is up to her eyeballs with this Safe Harbor thing, and finding a place to work. And I would like to suggest that we put her in Jim Clark's office. He's only here two days a week. You could work three days a week solidly for Safe Harbor, couldn't you? Can we do that?
The only thing is, there is, he is in busy time right now, in the summertime, because of assessment and getting the commitment that he has to go out and deal with some. He comes in on the weekends sometimes, he goes to get everything done. There are times of the year, yes, that it will, it would work here, but.
Okay, can we get a guarantee from him that he will not come in like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
From October on, yes. But now until October, it's, he's pretty busy.
I mean, we're sitting on a $20 million grant. And she needs to have the space, the focus on it. And it needs to be in where she can go shut the door. And not the negotiations can be, not so much private, but not out there for everybody to hear. And we all know what the gossip network is in this town. So if somebody is in this office.
Yeah, there are places that she might also be able to inquire on days where it might conflict with Jim, for instance, speaking maybe to the library board, because the library's not open.
Well, I, I can use the Marina office that I paid for for my business now, because we're not open.
Yeah. I was worried about the Marina.
So that sounds, that, that's good, but I, you know, it's really not.
Come winter.
Once, once the water's turned off and it's freezing down there, I did, would like to request a cost-effective heater so that I can stay there as long as possible.
But Jim will be done when that, I think, before that?
It's still very difficult to share this, basically, because there's so much paperwork and assessment involved that you're inundated with files falling all over you and.
I, I totally understand it. I also understand how people are very suspicious of anything that smacks of you doing townwork in a private business, do you know what I mean?
Well, Lomul works out of, I mean, you know, he's only in the legislature for four months, and then he is all, he must be working out of his house, so, yeah. But I know what you mean.
Yeah.
I, I.
I don't want anybody to look askance at anything.
Well, if you read Facebook, we're making no money, we've got no percentage of the grant, we've never been paid for anything, this is all volunteer, and every, every day I wake up wondering what I was thinking. So, let's just hope that the Washington.
It's a good thing nobody else wakes up and thinks that, Carol.
Actually, Julie does.
Oh, does she?
Even worse than me. What were we thinking? No. But, um, everything's going fine. And yes, that'd be great, I talked to Jim today, and this is busy time, and I'll be down there, and then in October. And I just need to be able to use the copy machine once in a while or whatever, or either be reimbursed for my copies and ink.
Yeah.
And if I could just get a cost, um, a heater that's, that you can just heat up the space really quickly as opposed to those electric, you don't want to use those things.
Oh, you need like a Renee, Renee.
Three hours to heat up the Marina.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, some, something that I can just go in and it's, and work down there. Because I do have.
I, I, I don't know whether that's supposed to be brought up, you know, but.
Renee has helped me upgrade my computer, upgraded my copier, has wired me all in wireless, got me a smartphone, that, every, I couldn't ask for a better town administrator, so I think she's just putting me out of the nest with my wings, and I can maybe work on my own, as long as she answers her phone.
And your phone a friend.
Girlfriend.
All right, and I can think, but thank you. Uh, I understand that he's busy now. We do need things assessed, because we need money, right? We need to raise revenue.
And the assessment's coming up for the next three years.
So, uh, committee, any committees, uh, what's going on with the, I have a question for you on the decline committee. I understand the man is trying to join Lubac and Treskot, is that something you heard about?
Yeah, the last, that he was talking about, we were talking about, um, other town people wanting licenses, but she wanted to form an alliance with Treskot somehow.
Can you check to see if that's legal? Can we, with our, with our town ordinance? I mean, I'm not saying it was a good or a bad idea, I'm just saying I'm not sure we can legally form an alliance with an, with an unincorporated territory.
I will.
As we are overseen by our Lubac ordinance.
I will, I will wait for her to present to me with something, perhaps, and, you know, because I don't know if that.
Well, they're like voting, talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, and then I'll look at the legality.
So I'm excited they've got a plan license in Lubac, and also they can trust get invited to it, so.
Right.
Okay, so, just MMA, probably. Thank you. I'm missing your ice cream place this summer. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I, I move adjourn.
All in, all in favor? You okay, Carol?
You signed a letter.
Who did?
A letter, there was a letter that you signed.
You mean the message, it wasn't a resignation letter? Oh, um, they signed it. It's a message from the selectmen. It's a message from the selectmen.